Any member of the public may address the board in one on an agenda item before or bring the board's consideration of the item, and two, on any matter not on the agenda that is within the accepted standard jurisdiction of the board at times divided on the agenda they had brought by citizens, divided in reference to the threat of classifieds for the board. Uh, regarding Timothy Prince.
Good afternoon, President Ritchie, Superintendent Thomas, members of the board. My name is Timothy Prince. I'm a lifelong resident of the city of San Bernardino in the 30. I'm here today a little bit disturbed about the public role of one of the board members. There's been comments made that it's somehow inappropriate for a board member to attend school district meetings. The city school districts, I think, need a working relationship with this board, and it is highly inappropriate. Matter of fact, I would question board members that don't attend school district meetings. And Ms. Monta, your role in attending finally the Fontana Unified School District meeting, and then attacking one of the board members there on a personal vendetta? We all know that there were thirteen people running when you ran for reelection to that board, and that you were defeated as an incumbent, and that Letizia Garcia and Sofia really defeated you. That doesn't give you the right to go to their board meetings and attack them, and then sign your name to recall campaigns because you didn't like the results that the voters chose. Thank goodness that the Fontana School District has implemented some changes. There's actually substantive review by the board members now. Things are questioned when there are multimillion dollar contracts with the city of Fontana. Thank goodness we have board members that want to know what's best for the children's interests, whether the children are getting the best substantive content in their after school curriculum, or whether they're just being warehoused so that city politicians can get a large amount of money from the school district. So, you know, these board members, one of whom is here today, are being attacked and called outsiders in their own school district. Their children attend in the school district, and they're called outsiders. Is that because of their ethnic background? Is that because they don't go along with the city's agenda for the school district? These people, like you, are elected to represent the children and their parents, and they are doing a fine job, and they don't deserve to be attacked by members of this board. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Prince. Jesse Valenzuela.
Good afternoon, superintendents Charles, board members and guests, I Ali, and Jesse Valenzuela, Dr. Kowalka, and we have the certificates of recognition for those distinguished schools that made California State University School and elementary schools. And we also have recommendations for all the members to see if you can turn on for the job of a member of the community council on July 30th. It's going to be this, well, it's your festival. Thank you, Tony.
Thank you, Mrs. Valenzuela. Okay, and.
Hi, my name is Sophia Green, and I'm one of the board members of Fontana Unified School District. And I am here not because Ms. Monta signed my recall, but I'm here to tell you how important you are. I came here as a board member representing myself, who sits on the Fontana Unified School District. And I'm upset when Ms. Monta, who is another board member, posts up negative things on Facebook. Yes, you do. I printed it. You call us a circus. That's what you referred the board. Every time I meet you at conferences, workshops, I introduce myself, I will speak to you, and if I have something to talk to you, I speak to you directly. I don't get on Facebook. I don't get my political friends to call me. So I'm here, yeah, you know what I'm talking about. The only time I have ever seen you at Fontana Unified School District was to come to tell one of my board members. It's on the call to marry a double murderer.
Could you address the board, please? You're addressing the board without a recommendation.
Yeah.
Mommy.
Okay, so I know I'm serving you papers. Ms. Nenaharo will be serving you.
Joe Alami.
I have no members in the trouble I'm in, the president who lacks, and my concern is the graduation rate with a dropout rate in the county of San Bernardino. Although the comments have a point out of fact that there are some positive figures coming out, we as a Latino community are very concerned about some of the facts that are coming out in some of our schools here in this particular city. San Bernardino High School right now has a dropout rate of thirteen percent seventy-seven. We have Pacific High School, it has a dropout rate of twenty-six point two percent. Now, that's a comp attrition rate that goes on top of that, because that is a common business. So when we talk about graduation rate, dropout rate, and attrition rate, there are some different points of view there. Atcohorn High School, which has a dropout rate of twelve point two, three, excuse me, twelve point five percent. Now, according to the county, they had an increase of three point five percent. But when you look at the numbers of the children, especially Latino communities that serve these particular disadvantaged schools, we're talking about a lot of children. We estimate right now that about forty-eight thousand Latino students throughout the state of California are not going to receive the high school diplomas. That translates into a lot of human resources that are being lost. I want to know what you're going to do to help these particular children, who have now become even more victimized than anything else. You ask for funds. We need those funds to be spent on children's needs. Not giving them another English class, or fail one English class, and tell them, listen, what you need more is more English. Since when is English the only claim that a person can judge intelligence? Do you know, I'm a bit of a people advocate in this college role right now. They cannot speak foreign English, you guys are extremely intelligent. And we use that as deciding factor. This is ridiculous. This is unvalid. If you need yourself to buy it, have all the children of the college school. Thank you.
Kristi Ritchie.
And for all the good afternoon, board members, I'm just here to bring up the issue of, the last meeting that you guys had, board member Nenaharo brought up putting on the agenda, discussing the litigation costs, and that put on the agenda. And as you guys can take the notes, they're uploaded on YouTube, I mentioned that last time, so you guys can go back and take a listen to what was said and what was requested by Ms. Nenaharo on the YouTube channel, Open Government CA, while one more, which I told you about last night. And since bringing it to your attention today, I'm highly concerned about that, as I've brought up several times, and I've come before you, the focus is wrong on litigation first by the litigation first. And I think that that really needs to be addressed and looked at by this board. Thank you very much.
Looking to action items, we have twenty-sixth of the Senate calendar. Moved by Mr. Sumter, selected by Ms. Harrison, thirty-sixth of the Senate calendar, all the day, receiving by saying aye.
Aye.
The phrase note. Action items, not the fun part. Like retirement recognition.
We have several listed in the agenda, but we have thirteen.
Thank you, Dr. Thomas. The first person that we'd like to have come forward is someone who's retiring from our district financial services, just a terrific individual who we're going to miss extensively, and that's Latana Abbott. So, a few notes just to share about Latana. I had a chance to see her when she had the whole group over at Cooley last week, and they were just, they were having a great time. They're going to really miss this lady. She's been there since ninety-five, and for those of you that know, School Claims used to be part of the organization. She started in School Claims and worked there for five years, accounts payable and payroll data for the county. And in March two thousand, she came into the retirement services and started working for all of the Calsters payments that have to be made to Calsters, doing the audits of those as well. And she's just been a tremendous resource down there. All of the people that have come in, she's been the trainer, she's been the support, she's been the mentor to help those individuals accomplish that task, and that's a very detailed task that's important. For retirement, she's going to, she has a property in Mississippi, she's going to go back and visit her family, she has a daughter there, and, or sister, I'm sorry, sister and her family, and then after that, she's going to go a little bit farther and go to New York and visit her son, who lives in New York. So she's going to spend some time traveling, but she's a wonderful individual, we're going to miss her a lot. Congratulations to her.
I just want to say that I really enjoyed working here for seventeen plus years, whatever. And Suzanne, my boss, is a wonderful lady, and I've been through, what are you saying there? It's not fake. Don't tell anybody. And I just want to say thank you guys, and I'm home.
Here, next person for business services, Diane Curtis. She knows to share about Diane. She works in our information technology department, and she's started, actually, in the organization working for Student Services. She worked as an OS two in Student Services, that goes back to ninety-four. She worked there for about seven years, and then came over to IT, and came to OS two, and then to OS three. And for those of you that are familiar with information technology, there's two big consortions that's part of the department. SNET, which is countywide, and then CCC, which is statewide. And this individual right here maintains all of the scheduling associated with that. Hundred and seventy-some meetings, I think, throughout the year that she coordinates, does minutes for, and just keeps everything on track. And that is just an intense accomplishment. She's here every day, she's very dependable, and not just that, when you see her, she has a smile this big every time. Her dedication, loyalty to this organization is beyond approach, and just someone that is just so treasured in this organization, not just in our division, but in the entire organization. And then for retirement, she's going to spend some time with her family, she's got five grandchildren, I believe, and one of the things that she said she's going to do, and this just shows her dedication and dedication, she's going to volunteer in her grandchild's school, as well as the library. Congratulations.
Thank you, Ted, members of the board, and Dr. Thomas. It has been a very big pleasure to work for this organization, and I thank you so much.
Okay, and our third person, business services, Dennis Mobley. And many of you know Dennis. Dennis is just a wealth of information. He's one of the most senior person in terms of tenure in this organization. He has over thirty-five years of service. He actually started here, I believe it was nineteen seventy-six, but before that, his career started in nineteen sixty-nine, worked for Campus Crusade for Christ, five of those years overseas, doing communications, music, talented musician. So he's got a lot of background, then coming to the county schools, he's worked in communications as a communication specialist, he's worked in overseeing print shop, he's in governance liaison now, he's been on SandDaps, been a board member for Alto for over twenty years, for Alto Chamber of Commerce, board directors for Arrowhead and Nyadway. He just has so many things in his background, because he's been so involved in the course of his career. He takes care of, in addition to governance liaison, he works with, as I mentioned, County Schools Association in San Bernardino County, but also SandDaps, which is our legislative group with county superintendents and county board members, and then also overseeing our Carter School Oversight, as well as our Williams program. So his support, his expertise, and background is just phenomenal. We're truly going to miss him. Now, for retirement, he's going to spend time with his family, but he's also going to continue to support us. We were able to convince him to help us with some of these programs on an ongoing basis, and that support's going to be valued by this organization to help meet our requirements. So, congratulate Dennis on just a tremendous career.
Well, after all of that, no wonder I'm tired. I do want to thank SBCSS for all of the years that I've been able to serve. I've actually worked under five superintendents, and he's been my boss twice, both as a division head and then as a county superintendent. And I want to thank the members of the board. I know what a tough job it is for them, you know, we just had public comments earlier, and that's really for a time where they, they receive comments from the public, it's not really a time for debate or dialogue. It's part of the meeting structure that I go through, but they do a terrific job. And for cabinet, enjoy working with them. I see so many friends in the audience that are here for lots of people, because we have a large retirement class of twenty twelve. Thank you so much. I'll give the mic back to whomever. Tiffany. And do the photo.
We'll make sure Suzanne gets her certificate, because she's been a royal employee for twenty-three years, so she certainly earned that. But this next lady, I think, holds the record, so Lori Matheny, thirty-six years, come on up here. So Lori, in your thirty-six years with Student Services, I think you've worked in every program we have, with every age level that we have, and she's ending her career as rail specialist and CSEA president, and one reason she's such an excellent president is because she's been there, done that. So no matter what program we talked about, Lori knew it firsthand, and that was very valuable. She's planning to continue as the CSEA president, you know, you can't keep her down, and to help out when we need extra assistance for railing. Lori, we hope you're going to have more time for your home business, and church work, and your family, including your grandkids in North Carolina, and I think you're going to need a clone to do all that. Congratulations. Would you like to say something?
I would just like to say it's been an honor to work for SBCSS for the last thirty-six years, and even a little bit before that with Sabine and volunteer work, that five superintendents, he is my favorite. That truly it has been an honor to work for this organization with the wonderful management that we've had, the wonderful parent educators, the teachers we work with, and administration has been awesome, and I'm going to miss everybody, and I'm happy to be a class of twenty twelve. And as I leave this great place as an employee, a lot of administration and parent educators and teachers and so forth are coming along with me for classes of twenty twelve. So thank you for the great time at SBCSS.
All right, is Dorothy McFarland in the audience? There she is, sitting in the bathroom. As Dorothy comes forward, let me share with you that Dorothy has worked eighteen years for San Bernardino County Schools as a parent educator, and she's been most recently in our juvenile court school, where she works in the library and also in the special day class, which is not an easy job, so, you know, God bless you, Dorothy, that you've helped a lot of kids. Get this, in post-retirement, Dorothy plans to go get her teaching credential. So you're, you're an inspiration. We hope you also have some time for travel and for some good barbecues with your family. Dorothy, would you like to share a few words?
I'd just like to say it's been a privilege working here for San Bernardino County Superintendent Schools, and hopefully I'll return as a teacher.
Ms. Benny, will you come on down here? Ms. Benny has spent sixteen years helping us out in Student Services as a parent educator. She's worked special education, she's worked alternative education, and she's one that a lot of the students refer to as mom, or grandma. Superintendent is fond of saying that it's relationships that help with the dropout problem, and it's, I know it's your relationship with so many kids that has kept them in school, and has really made a difference, and so, you know, thank you for everything that you've done, Benny. And she's planning in retirement to serve as a surrogate parent for us, so that those kids in court school and Community Day School, that needs somebody to stand up for them and their education rights, Ms. Benny, Grandma Benny's still going to be there. Would you like to share a few words?
Well, you know, I enjoyed the sixteen years working with the county, but I had thirty-four years at Norton. So the county a lot, because Norton closed up, some of you didn't like Norton, so they closed it. So then I came and worked for the county, and really, it's a total, it was a totally different environment, and I didn't realize at the time how our students were suffering, young people, because my kids always went to private school, but a lot of our students in San Bernardino County, they're, and I don't mean suffered physically, but emotionally. So I was thankful that I, I got the job, because I used to watch Bullard Street, when I was driving, I'll stop the car and stop, you know, talk to Ms. Benny, say, Ms. Benny, you just bullied us, that's what you're doing. But I enjoy, I enjoy these kids, so everybody in San Bernardino County knows that.
All right, and also for Student Services, we have Mr. Charles White. Charles has worked for eighteen years in court schools, and if you don't think that's hard, you come and try it. He's particularly known for his expertise in technology, and he has assisted with incorporating technology into the curriculum and classrooms. He's been very active in CTA, and in post-retirement, he's going to enjoy some home projects and piloting airplanes, is that right? Airplanes, so he has a whole other hidden talent I didn't know about, so congratulations, Charles.
I actually started out in the services in community schools in nineteen ninety-one, and was probably the first alternative education teacher, and I worked as a teacher for ten years after that. I've recognized, paid supervisor, shared, I paid superintendent, and it's been a pleasure and privilege, but never felt moment, and we shall miss him.
I just have one friend retiring today, so Linda, come on up, this is Linda Moore. She has been cornerstone of our organization. She started out in Desert Mountain Selfa, she's worked with us for twenty years, and she's been in education support services for a great deal of that time, and we kind of have relied upon her as a person who keeps high standards, but also is kind, as she guides us in the right direction at the same time. We are going to miss her greatly, but are happy for her, because she has ten grandchildren around the country, and is going to spend a lot of time combining travel with the pleasure of seeing them, and we hope to stay in touch. It was so nice to see you coming in today. John would even make you wear a visitor's badge, I thought that was funny. So here's a certificate. We wish we could give you more to thank you for all that you've done with us, for us, and we hope to see you again. Would you like to say something?
Along with my twenty years here, I have twelve from Northern California, Richmond Unified and Fairfield-Sussex, so that's made about thirty-two years total, and I thank the board today for the recognition. So pleased to see Crystal over here, congratulating her on her promotion. I must be a wonderful job for you, working with Crystal, you know, and I've always, when I started with county schools, I was at the Selfa, but I always wanted to work here, and I always wanted to work, and that time was called CNI, and I loved working with the standards when we first started with the map and sort of, so, yeah, and so I just thank you for the opportunity, a good job, and I'll miss everyone here, thank you.
All right, I have a list, and here comes Jim. I am delighted to be here and talk about Jim. He started with there at Rialto High School, and he was there four and a half years, and then eight months at Loma Linda University Medical Center. He started with county schools in nineteen ninety-eight as a technology instructor, and many of you, I'm sure, took classes from Jim to learn about how to use a computer, and thank goodness, because he has taught me a great deal of how to turn it on, how to change batteries, those kinds of things. He served as the chairperson of the SBCSS Technology Advisory Committee for twelve years, and helped with the Y2K, and changing to Outlook, and all those things. He was a part of the Employee Connection Committee, and he was a member for two years, and then a co-person, a chairperson, and then a member again. In the Employee Connection, he was the sheriff representative and the SCME specialist, so many of you know him going office to office to get those donations. He got them for me, I didn't know who he was, I might go tell everybody he's not a student. He is, he was a member of the Williams inspection team, and he survived a shift, a shift from management to an OS two a couple of years ago, and that is when I had the pleasure to really get to know Jim. He came to work at the counseling center, which is a foreign country to many people, and so he came in with a new language, having to learn, and everything we do is different. And he did it with grace, and he did it with kindness, and he's just been a wonderful asset to our team, so we're actually really going to miss him, he has helped us so much. And so these are some of the And so, these are some of the things he's gonna do in his retirement. He's gonna wear his hat. He's gonna go to the beach. He has plans in July in Newport. And he'll be able to see his four grandchildren who live up north, and he'll be talking on his ham radio. So, those of you who have a ham radio, dial him in. He will be completing several woodworking projects. He's gonna be very busy. And he's gonna do some circus and volunteer work in his community and his church. So, Jim, I know you want to say something.
It has truly been a pleasure to come into this organization, to be able to help, to be welcomed in so many different aspects. Thank you very much for your wordbook, letting me come in and letting me leave. In fact, I, as I turn around, I recognize more people from having been in a classroom of mine than not. So many people in the audience. One thing I've really enjoyed is like when you go to the Williams Training or some other great big meeting, and I'm looking around, and I'm trying to figure out who it is I don't know, and everyone else that I'm with is trying to figure out who they do know in the room. It's been really wonderful to be able to circulate, to know everybody, to help out in any way I can. And it's really, I mean, that was a foreign language up there. Children's Center is a whole nother vulgarity. And I'm so appreciative of being welcomed to their family and being able to do what I can. Thank you very much.
They all happen to be assistant superintendents. So, first, we're gonna ask Dr. Dan to come forward. Dr. Dan is our assistant superintendent for Human Resources, and she's been with our organization for three years. And at that time, she actually focused quite a bit on customer service, as well as training and orientation programs. She has done some really good work with respect to training in our organization. And just like to share a story she shared with me that was fairly significant. She was a high school principal in her career, and started a fine arts program at a high school. And several years later, actually while she was here with SBCSS, she got invited back to that school to see the fruits of the beginnings that she started. And she was invited to come and watch a program. And this is now a award-winning fine arts program at this high school. And she was touched quite a bit by the fact that the staff and the students there remembered her, wanted her to come back and see what she had started. We're gonna miss Denise. Denise plans to continue to do training programs, but part-time. She wants to make that clear, that she's done with the full-time stuff. And she also hopes to be a, serve at the Getty Museum, talking about what type of art and programs are there, both in English, French, and Spanish, as she speaks all three languages. And she's going to learn Chinese. So, good luck with that. Congratulations to you. Congratulations to you, and thank you.
First of all, thank you very much to Dr. Thomas, exemplary leadership. My former colleagues, I miss you all already, board members. It's been an honor and a pleasure. Even though I was only here three years, to me, it was a remarkable three years, because in my thirty-nine-year career, I think this was the hot. And I'm not gonna cry, because HR people are never supposed to cry. You know them. Human Resources people never cry, right, Jim? Human Resources, it's always, it's always. But I get emotional, because this, these were the, these last three years. Oh, Kevin, too. Yeah, thank you both for coming, my two directors. I appreciate that. These last three years have been the most remarkable years of my career. I truly, truly believe that. Wonderful people here. It's been an honor and a privilege to serve the employees here. Wonderful leadership of Dr. Thomas, and I've just enjoyed sharing stories with him and my colleagues. And it's the people in San Bernardino I'll miss the most. I've been off a week now, three days in a row. I woke up at 5:30 a.m., ready to go. And then the fourth day, I woke up at 6:30, and the fifth day, I woke up at seven. And I think I'm into the root of this. It's a terrible thing now, but seven o'clock feels really good. But I'm, I'm just thrilled to be here for this recognition, and I plan on, as Dr. Thomas says, continue to do some training in my former county office, which is a little closer to my home. I moved back to Westlake Village, but right now, the boxes live there. And I'm just kind of living wherever I can find a place where the boxes are, because I lived here three years, and now there's three years' worth of boxes to unpack. So, I'll be busy for a while. But thank you for the opportunity. It has been wonderful. I'm just looking out at a lot of really wonderful people, and I will miss all of them. Thank you.
Well, Margaret's been with the county schools office for six years. However, Margaret served for thirty-two years in San Bernardino City Unified School District as a teacher, principal, vice-principal, several things you've done there while you were there. Amongst her greatest accomplishments were empowering staff to support the vision of educating students and being fully supportive of their efforts. And under Margaret's leadership, the division made it a point to market the efforts of the county schools office, its mission and purpose, and share resources of the administrative division with local, state, federal stakeholders. Enlightening educators, business leaders, parents, and every level, that it is all about the children. She's planning on focusing on personal responsibilities as a school board member now for the San Bernardino City Unified School District, spending quality time with her non-traveling She would like to write a second book, and writing curriculum and making presentations in partnership with actor Bill Duke. Venturing ninth-grade females, dealing hoots with the radiant ribbies of Highland, her red hat society family, and traveling with her girlfriends to Mammoth, New York, Boston, and Canada. We all know that Margaret never really retires. She just re-energizes and rewires. But we're sure that we're going to see you often, and we know that you won't be a stranger to county schools. We want to thank you for all that you've done while you've been here. We're gonna miss you.
Thank you. I just wanted to say, for the first time in six years, I had to look for a seat today. So, that's interesting. And believe it or not, it's warm back there. It was always cold up here, but it's warm in the back, so I just want you to know that. Yes, yes, yes. But I do want to say to you, Dr. Thomas, Mr. Ritchie, and to the members of the board, and especially the cabinet that I've worked with for six years, and Crystal, that I think I met even before I got on the cabinet. It has been a wonderful six years, and I have just enjoyed it all. I wake up every morning, and you know, in six years, I never set alarm at a long clock. And even though I did not always get here, when I said, when I shouldn't have been here, I could have. But I just want you, I just want you to, just want you to know that. But at any rate, it has been a wonderful six years. I've learned a lot from everybody, including the wonderful staff in administrative services. And I just, anytime you need me, I am a good volunteer. I am gonna do some traveling. I got a call Saturday for a job offer already, and I said, "I'll talk to you after September." But at any rate, I will be busy with the school board, and I just want you to know, I have visited two schools, including Wilson Elementary School this morning. I was walking through the classrooms, I thought I was on a Williams visit. But at any rate, it's been, it's been great. And to all of you that I've worked with out here, and for the rest of the class of 2012, congratulations to you, and thank you, and I will not be a stranger.
Well, Sharon has provided the office a total of seventeen years of service. She's led student services programs, including special education, alternative education, and state preschool. She was a member of the executive cabinet and served on the negotiation team for county schools. At the state level, Sharon was the chair of the Student Programs and Services Subcommittee of the County Superintendents Association. She was recognized by AXA as the Central Office Administrator of the Year for Region Twelve in 2005, and in 2012 was recognized with the Distinguished Service Award. Sharon has done just so much for our student services division, and really built a group of people there that really work together as a team and see collaboration as a core of their work. Now, in retirement, Sharon plans on spending time with her family and doing some traveling, finding more time in her schedule for exercising and hiking. Also spending time in another area of interest, genealogy and researching the family tree. Congratulations to you, Sharon.
So, why am I still sitting up there? As part of the wonderful class of 2012, you know, I can't quite measure up to the rest of you. I'm being held back for a month. Actually leaving in August. I've spent the first half of my career in the school district and the second half in the county office. I think spending time in the school district has prepared me well to serve at the county level. And I am indebted to my wonderful coworkers. I think you are just the finest professionals, and it's been an honor to work with all of you. I would like to particularly thank this afternoon, the superintendent and the county board, for your support of student services, serving the most vulnerable and at-risk kids, particularly the fact that you continue to visit the classrooms on a regular basis. I think a lot of places, they go once, and they say, "Okay, I've seen it, and I'm done now." Not here. There is just active involvement all the time, and we so much appreciate that. It's been an honor to serve here. Thank you.
We need to pass the retirement election. I just want to tell you, Dennis, I'm gonna miss your expertise in being the charter school expert of the county. And I hope that Dr. Thomas can bring you back and give you a statement to finalize approval of any committee, committee reports that we get future petition deals. Thank you. Your expertise.
Seven point two, we're seeing the first reading. The delegation of responsibilities and priorities, and this is the changes that need to be brought out because of the elimination of the registry. So, this is your first reading. Move by Ms. Carle. Say goodbye, Ms. Montes. All favor, say five, I say aye. Aye. opposed, no. Passes. Seven point four is approval of the Regional Occupational Program Course Offering. I need you to look in the bookcase. Move by Ms. Montes. Say goodbye, Ms. Harrison. All favor, say five, I say aye. Aye. opposed, no. Seven point five is approval of membership due to San Bernardino County School Board and Association. Move by Ms. Montes. Say goodbye, Mr. Sumpier. All favor, say five, I say aye. Aye. opposed, no. Passes. Seven point six is a statement of conscience, which is in the book, but I, it's very long. I'd love to read it, but it is very long. I'd like to meet Ms. Montes through it. Move by Ms. Montes. Say goodbye, Mr. Sumpier. This question.
I didn't realize the extent of this statement, so I was gonna have to read. You know, I have a concern that we're putting all the responsibility on our legislatures in response to the budget deficit. I think you read a column in the paper that reported, obviously, that's what happened. Given my opinion, that I felt what was missing was accountability of school districts to ensure that the funds they're getting are utilized effectively and efficiently. And I do believe that, that the priorities in some districts are not properly placed. We do like the funding effectively. So, what I'd like to do is, is recommend that we add a last sentence. That school districts throughout California need to be held accountable to ensure that taxpayer's monies are being implemented efficiently. I feel accountability should be both ways, the state legislators to ensure our children are educated and well-protected, but also, I think, school districts need to be held accountable for the monies that are being utilized efficiently throughout. But that's, I don't know how we do that, but I must be.
You would move to amend that addition of your sentence?
Yes.
So, second? Do you want to have any more discussion? I'm told.
I didn't realize the extent of this statement until I was able to read. You know, I have a concern that we're putting all the responsibility on our legislatures in response to the budget deficit. I think you read a column in the paper that they reported obviously, that's what happened. Given my opinion, that I felt what was missing was accountability of school districts to ensure that the funds they're getting are utilized effectively and efficiently. And I do believe that the priorities in some districts are not properly replaced. We do like the funds to be effective. So, what I'd like to do is recommend that we add a last sentence. That school districts throughout California need to be held accountable to ensure that taxpayer's monies are being implemented efficiently. I feel accountability should be both ways. The state legislators to ensure our children are educated and well-protected, but also I think school districts need to be held accountable for the monies that are being utilized efficiently throughout. But that's, I don't know how we would do that.
You would move to amend that issue of your sentence?
Yes.
Is there a second?
Do you want to have any more discussion?
On the original. Oh, on the original. Well, let's take care of the first. Is there a second to the dies for lack of a second? Open discussion then on the statement of conscience.
I was one of the ones, when I read the Fair Valley example, I was one of the ones who asked and had this for the agenda. I think it's comprehensive. And I can't, it's invaluable to think that anybody who comes to education would think that we're not being held accountable to our funding. And anyway, it's a statement of conscience. It's pure and simple and very wordy.
It's a great. We do have someone who needs to speak to decide on the agenda and Chris Burton.
Hello again. I have some of the pain concerns that Mr. Marla had brought up. And this is a recurring thing that I tried to bring before you guys, which is the issue of accountability is tied to where are we focusing on funding? Are we really focusing on services and education for children, or are we more very natural litigation? And that's the concern that I have, and I think that it should be adjusted in the statement of conscience, is my opinion. Thank you very much.
Aren't we not held accountable by products and statements that are held accountable? I mean, I'm sure we are. I know we are.
When I read this statement, and first of all, I'm not sure why they call this a statement of conscience, but anyway, when I read this, to me, in the essence of this statement, though Mr. Marla may be accurate about accountability piece, the essence of this is that the funding level that schools, districts are receiving has diminished. In fact, I think we're at about, what are we, twenty, twenty-two percent below where we should be with Prop 99 here in T's. And the essence of this is saying, state unique deal, takes an action and makes sure that the schools are fully funded. I don't see that this is really talking about accountability per se, but the funding that we receive to do the job that we need to do. That was my thought this morning when I read that. Accountability is not what this statement of conscience is about. It is about finances, finance of us.
And we're kind of asking for additional money. We're asking to receive the money that we're entitled to with Prop 99. This is all about.
Ms. Harrison?
How did this get started, this statement?
Sharon, the board from Fair Valley.
Did Fair Valley write this?
No, came from Santa Barbara, I think is what we read. Came from Santa Barbara County Office of Education.
And, and, they wrote it, and?
They adopted it.
And, and so they're sending it out to all these places saying, please adopt it? If we adopt this, where does it go?
Get some direction if you want to go.
Otherwise, is this we're saying we agree with this? That's all we're saying?
Send it, if you want to send it, sign it.
I'm just wondering, the purpose of, you know, adopting this and this is what we believe, or is this part of something that's growing? I don't, actually, I don't know. And there wasn't any, there wasn't any.
As far as I know, this is not a political, you know, send this to anybody. This is a statement of conscience.
Mr. Marla?
Well, I was, you know, we're attacking the state, which is the state legislature, state legislature. You know, we submit that it's unacceptable, self-repeating for the state. I mean, we're attacking the state. I don't think, I don't think. But this talk about, you know, one of the reasons I asked the legislation across the young generation, you could see how many of us have, that's where I feel is one area, that taxpayers later use to find parents servicing the disabled for child, that feels that money, that it would be wasteful. So, and we're just talking about this county. We've got fifty-eight counties in the state. I think that money could be of better use in the classroom. So, I'm just giving you one example where it's coming from, so you know I'm not just making this up.
And I like to say that the statement of conscience stands on its own. And if you call it attacking, then you call me Irish, that I'm ready to attack, you know? So, we need to stand up and say that it's not fair. And that's what being a leader requires, you know?
People expect from us to set made statements. It's not right.
Any other discussion on this?
Well, there's nothing wrong with the statement, you know, we make the statement, but, and we just all agree and that's it. And nobody, we don't tell anybody that we adopted this. No, we do it, except we're just saying, nice job.
Santa Barbara?
Santa Barbara and Fair Valley. I mean, I just want to know what we're doing in what we adopted to.
Well, a newspaper, some paper called Seem to be concerned about this statement of conscience. And there's an article that came out. So, I don't know, they must be concerned with it.
Did you call them, you said, or?
His name was in the paper too.
Yeah, so it must be important to somebody for them to take the time. So, I was just wondering. I'm ready to vote.
Okay. Did we move adoption, did we move adoption?
Well, we had, yeah. I would just like to say that I think we should do more work with this, with this adopted. And I think we need to send it to our.
Let's do everything.
That's true. I think it could be in the same motion, I believe.
But we've got one, it doesn't.
It could be something along the lines of.
The fact that you had my motion, any of the motion have a path. If they're following my motion to adopt a statement of conscience and send popular to our state.
To our county's legislature?
Our state.
Our state.
That represents.
Right.
Okay. The adjustment move that we amend by sending to the, to the state legislatures. Your discussion on, oh, I, second on the amendment?
I second that.
Okay, move by Ms. Monson, second by Ms. Harrison. Any discussion on that aspect on the amendment?
Right. Now, is that the, I hate to read it this way, but I mean, if this stuff's going out, then does this mean it is accompanied by a letter from the superintendent explaining what we're doing here to all of the legislature, legislators in our area? Is that how this could do? Yeah, I mean, I think the superintendent ought to write a letter that goes along with this, saying, this is what we did and for these reasons. So, that doesn't interfere on somebody's desk as it did on ours, as, you know, this is nice garbage, you know?
Mr. Marla?
Well, I agree with that. And I'm asking that my statement, what I both know, also put in a couple.
I think they're voting, I voted for it.
We're voting on the amendment, so any further discussion on the amendment? All in favor of the amendment, say five. I say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed, no.
And now we're back to the main motion, which is to adopt the statement of conscience with the amended statement of conscience. Move by Ms. Monson, second by Mr. Sumpier. All in favor, say five. I say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Opposed, no.
Four oh one. Okay. Consolidated application. Somebody give this a little.
This is the annual bringing forward to the county board, my intent to report to the county this day. I will bring to your attention that economic impact paid by the county office can only be spent to juvenile. We are not eligible with county office for those in other settings. And that time one parked in the living room house that can only be spent in court schools. And the other programs are for those, especially in alternative education.
I have a question. Does that we approve every?
If you've tried senior and they're changing it this year.
Oh, are they?
Yes, they're changing the procedure.
It seemed more recent than a year ago. All right. I have an interday motion.
I move we adopt the county. If it's all of you that.
It will pass. It will pass. Consolidated application. Okay, move by Ms. Harrison?
Second.
Second by Ms. Sumpier. All in favor, say five. I say aye.
No, I have a question. Isn't there one part of this that we, is this the one that we've been talking about?
It is not listed in your motion for, to apply to funding because we do not call it.
Right, I thought I read that somewhere.
Okay. All in favor, say five. I say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Passes. Seven point, another warehouse, seven point eight. Resolution of the San Diego County Board of Education adopting a county-wide vision for our future. And this is not the San Diego County Schools. This is, this is the San Diego County brought by the supervisors.
Who requested, who's the county? Who requested, who's the county?
County Board of Supervisors on behalf of Greg DeRoe, County Administrative Office.
This is their.
Last one.
State.
Yeah, the county, the county mission.
I'll move to move to a question.
Move by Ms. Monson.
I second.
Saying by Ms. Harrison.
And then, and then it's thinking, where does this go?
Well, that's up to the county.
Yeah.
That's the county supervisor.
And we will send a copy of the force endorsement to the administrative office.
You've been involved, I believe, in some of these discussions, because I certainly was a high junior in the county. And what this is, is the county is trying, in this first life of things, to find out how we can all sort of cooperate to move the county forward. It's a, it's a very ambitious, I mean, you know, the goal is extremely ambitious. But the county is fragmented. And so, I applaud the county and the supervisors trying to put this together. I don't know how much, you know, I asked earlier on how much we were actually involved, because I thought it was not my place as just a single trustee. So, you were involved in this?
The paragraph in there that talks about education, we were involved in the discussions.
Yeah. So, we did part in making this.
And they've also developed a series of calendar meetings and education, one of those elements. And they are engaging the educational community on how can we all work together to support each other by including the education.
Well, and as recently as the alliance meeting that I went to, Greg DeRoe made a statement there concerning this and how we need to, you know, if the county's going to move forward, folks, we're going to have to up the educational business in the county. I mean, it's just, we are, we are not holding up education enough to attract the kind of businesses that will move the county, because we do not have that kind of workforce that is indigenous to the county. And that's a significant problem. And one that this was trying to address as we moved along. This is just an initial statement. I don't know whether you can tell us what next steps will come as a result of.
I think that right now we're trying to work through these calendar meetings and trying to identify some common goals. So, to me, the health community, the transportation, the education, and they're trying to have discussions with all of these agencies to figure out where common goals are and how can we work together to support each other. So, for example, if the big push this year was going to be trying to reduce the dropout rate, then all the agencies would come together in effort to say, how can we help support that goal, that education? There might be a health goal that we all come around and figure out, how can we leverage all of our resources to support that goal? So, it really is about trying to figure out where we can work together and leverage all of our assets to make a better impact on the city of education. And this discussion has been on top priority.
And, you know, and that's my concern. You know, I don't see the end here, other than high-quality education that talks about what we're going to do in order to adhere to this resolution. I could see if it said we're going to increase college fund rate, because I think that that data, we're going to split this, or this, an issue of whether we're going to be able to adhere to this. And that's not mentioned at all. We have a county board of education asking us to approve this vision, but we're not talking about education. I mean, that's what we should be going on. How is this going to impact specific to education? And, and I think that's, has the school district adopted this?
The county has asked all the districts in the county.
See, my concern is.
Or actually endorse it.
Was it, are we endorsing it or are we adopting?
The resolution is to endorse.
Yeah, I just can't work out to it. This had made the circuit on the school districts and then we came back and twenty voted for it, thirteen didn't or something. But I just don't see where this has any specific direction on us. I want to vote on something to give a false sense of security that something's going to happen. I don't, it doesn't make any sense.
Because I attended, you know, Tricia Neat's, I, and didn't y'all get invited to him?
Yes.
You guys?
I got invited.
I didn't get invited.
Well, I mean, I.
I don't get invited.
Well, I, I attended the meet, you know, and then reported to you and said that I didn't think I ought to be talking about the county. So, yeah, okay. But the deal is that I don't think this is intended to be so specific. I think this is an overarching statement. For instance, it doesn't talk that specifically about what we want transportation to do. But there's a whole section about, you know, what's going to happen with transportation within the county to tie up the airport and the other things. And none of that is in here either. And there's not a section about bringing, you know, specifically about how we're going to get business to come back into the county. This is the overarching thing. So, therefore, it is, education is a part of that. I think it's the next step, which is why I was asking, what are the next steps? And I would appreciate if the board could hear about what are the next steps, and if we need to have some kind of representation at the next steps, so that we could talk about what specifically we think we can do or what they think we ought to do and, and press on. So, we need to hear that from you as you, I guess, continue to attend these meetings.
Well, they're just, the alternate meetings just that we got the two and the three.
And you attend them?
I attend them.
Good. Well, then we can get, then we know we'll get the information when we get around to being specific.
Yeah, I guess this is a vision statement and not a legal, particularly planned, like the county.
So, what Forrest said earlier, I mean, don't we have that expectation of our county board supervisors to take care of this? I just think the same is premature. Should come back once everybody has, either bought into it and then we've got some directions for you to go. Any further? Any further discussion? All the favors, you can either say no.
Aye.
Oppose, no.
Oppose, no.
Forward.
Uh, no other action items? Most days we're going to consider the statute. We have a, two assistant superintendents in our organization, Sheriff, Mr. Bor, Randy Alka, and C. Edmonds, I hope. Randy is taking the new assistant superintendent for student services, starting on August first. And we also have Lisa Norman, the assistant superintendent for student resources. Randy's been with our organization for the year seventeen, never leave before. He serves a variety of programs in student services, currently serves as the area director and the Florida team. Lisa, as some of you may remember, Lisa also has been with county schools for a number of years. She recently took the position as the assistant superintendent of human resources in Beaumont School District, so she'll be coming back to starting September fifth as assistant superintendent for human resources. Welcome both of you to our team and looking forward to working with you. We recently put out some information, as you heard, as old way eloquently said, we have work to do with our graduation and dropout rates. However, we did see some good progress this year, and our graduation rates went up to seventy-four percent, an improvement of three point five percent over the two thousand nineteen year, while the state only improved about four and a half percent, so we outpaced the state, although the state is still ahead of us at seventy-six point three percent. And our dropout rate improved three point eight percent, dropping down to fifteen point three percent, nearly two times the improvement of the state average that fell to fourteen point four percent. We did see improvements as well in our subgroups. Graduation rates for African-American students in the county rose six point five percent to sixty-seven percent, and that was four point one percent above the state grad rates for similar students. Corresponding to the dropout rates for African-American students fell five point five percent to twenty point two percent, which was well under the state average of twenty-four point seven. County Hispanic students also posted better averages for both grad and dropout rates than the state averages, with a grad rate of seventy-one point four percent countywide. Hispanic students were one percent above the statewide average, and for the dropout rate, the countywide rate of seventeen percent was point seven percent lower than the state average. White students as well, a grad rate of eighty-one percent, grew three point seven percent, but trailed the state average of eighty-five point five percent, and the dropout rate for white students fell four point one percent to ten point seven percent compared to the state rate of eight point nine. Among English learners, grad rates improved two point five percent to sixty percent. Socioeconomically disadvantaged students in the county jumped four point six percent for grad rate of sixty-nine point six, which was just about even with the state average. So, I mean, these, these results certainly are encouraging. Obviously, we still have a lot of work to do in these areas, but it is, it is important, I think, to know that we're, we're making good progress.
I think we're going to move on to, Mr..
Just a couple things with board, I think I've got comments. First is all the districts have submitted their budgets for two thousand twelve, thirteen. We're going through that certification process right now. We'll have that completed by the middle office. If you recall, the difference between budget adoption and interim reports is that when they submit their interim reports, they're either positive, qualified, or negative. If you recall, second interim, we have thirteen districts that were qualified. When they submit their budgets, either an approval, or a disapproval, or a conditional approval. So we'll be going through that. Last year, if you recall, state had language in the final budget that didn't allow us to use multi-years, so we have only one conditional approval. This year, we can look at the multi-years, so we anticipate more than that. We'll keep the board informed and make sure that they're able to complete that certification process. We do have our budget workshop scheduled for July fourteenth over at the West End, so that will take place. If the board's interested, you're welcome to attend. We'll have Kevin Gordon, Jack O'Connell, and the team from SNA present on that budget workshop and give our counties all the information. And we'll be providing all the districts and county with our budget assumptions and guidelines, which is going through its final revision probably today and tomorrow. They should have that by the end of the week, so everybody will be current in terms of moving forward with their boards, especially if they have to do additional, who will make adjustments, or is it a different person? And then finally, we have almost everybody in the prior. We have District Financial Services, which is the last one, and they're doing that this next couple of weeks, so we'll have everybody in place. As I mentioned, we're looking at September, October for the board. We'll have an open house and we'll invite board and guests to visit while everybody's in their new offices. It's gone very, very well, and very, very clean across the board and through the House of the House.
Did you say the budget workshops in the fourth floor?
It's Thursday, thirteenth, I'm sorry. It's Friday. I'm sorry, mine's Tuesday. It's Friday.
Yes, it's coming Friday. At the West End.
At eight o'clock in the morning?
Uh, I think it's at eight thirty. But we have, we're trying to get to board secretary, anybody's interested, should we have that?
Listen to Jack O'Connell?
None, none to. Eight thirty is the registration time, I'm sorry.
Oh, that's, that's better.
Is it very? Have we given a? Well, we, we allow our facilities to cost availability. Can we provide at no cost all of this?
We are, we report with accountability work, have the regional assistant district and school support that has been doing the no child left behind accountability work. Well, as it's starting to change with the new Common Core standards, then the work for accountability is starting to shift. They still have program improvement schools, there's, we have a new layer of services that are being provided to different school districts. So in August, as things, those schools come out, there will be required accountability work, there will be slightly different foundational work, and we'll be rolling in the school districts, but it's basically the same thing for around another year and a half while we see what other kinds of accountability requirements will be put in place within the system. So that's, that's one main area that we're working on this summer in our quote downtime of approximately twenty weeks. But in addition to that, we are doing summer Common Core curriculum standards work, and so a number of the districts are participating in the professional development, either at the leadership level or at the teacher level. That's going on as we speak and as much as we can get in the summer, the bridge materials, the new materials that will help teachers bridge the gap between the textbooks they have now and the materials they have now and the, what they need to say with the new standards are going to be coming in place in September. In addition to that, you may have heard that Abbott has been blue penciled, so that we have been working hard to try to figure out a way to continue to support that Abbott for the entire coming year, that the grant as it stands ends in December, and we're hoping to continue that through the coming year and see if there isn't something we can work out to be a perfect place. As you know, it's one of our most successful programs. We are very proud of it, and we're hoping that that will provide us some leverage with what we call Abbott Central, because we give them such good statistics and our program has worked here so well. So what can you incorporate that as well?
What is the funding?
Like one million statewide.
One million.
Eight point, one million.
That's statewide.
We have about seven thousand dollars.
Yes.
Yeah.
Eight hundred thousand is our favorite amount.
And that money really is good, it's district money that comes to the county and it's used by the districts who participate in the-
California has the only model that can add like this, but what they do here so far is they funded regional projects. So, regional, Riverside, San Diego, Ennio and Mondo receive this eight hundred thousand dollars. We are the agency, so we provide that Abbott support for all four counties. Our county, our four county region data is some of the best in the Abbott program worldwide. And so we're really hoping that we can figure out a way to keep our regional kind of program together. Otherwise, the, the option that school districts will have is to contract directly with Abbott Central and receive support through them. But, but it will be a cost to all school districts, and this is something that they haven't had to pay for in the past, is that support side of, of the Abbott program, so it'll be a new expense to school districts.
Well, I didn't understand, you said Abbott has been blue penciled. You're saying that one section of Abbott will not be available, but Abbott Central will still be available?
Yeah, but Abbott Central is the way the rest of the United States works with Abbott. They contract directly with Abbott.
So California is still going to be part of that?
Well, district by district or school by school.
If they like to do it, it's a different, they pay the Abbott Central directly, and our, our services, the way that we've been able to make this so successful, it's a different model that they use where they have regional professional development, it's much more distant, less, less important.
Okay, is there this question that, that Mr. Sumner asked, eight hundred thousand comes into the county, does any of that money go out to a school district? Or that you don't, no, it's all for the county and then we provide service and support. Do, do the districts have to pay for them? Well, they pay three hundred dollars. It's a very minimal. Okay, what's the answer? Yes, yes, they pay three hundred dollars.
But they're not, the services are, we're providing plenty of the house.
Where does the three hundred dollars go?
It goes into the same pot, but I guess I'm just typically crazy when they have to do that. We get that eight hundred thousand to provide services, there's an additional three hundred dollars that comes with the services.
So in December, if the program is blue penciled, has it already been?
It's annual penciled.
Okay, so then we know that when December comes, you're not going to get the eight hundred thousand anymore.
I think it's over.
How many employees are we talking about in the county level, which is where we're working?
Well, we have three project specialists at this point, and our program manager and two support people manage the, you know, the tech, the technical assistance and, and the clerical support board. So they, they are, one of our fellows, as you know, became superintendent chairman, or would have had one more.
So we have to absorb those people or lay them off?
Right.
Do, do the Abbott teachers who receive the stipend, advisors for Abbott in each different school, who pays for themselves?
The district funds that work.
So that's not part of the eight hundred thousand, that's part of the district. They pay the stipend to the advisor for the Abbott program.
And how many districts have this amount?
They don't know. Well, I, I know that when, I think we just changed an advisor one time, I was on guard with parents supporting Abbott, it's such a program that you have so crazy about, it's the way they're going to really hear it from the parents. I don't, I don't know, hasn't it been in the newspaper that's been with pencil? People know? I read somewhere.
It's our, our, you know, graduation.
And around this Thursday.
Let me, I'm trying to see this impact, so our, our staff actually is doing like training for Abbott teachers, is that?
We do coaching, we help them set up programs, and we do their certification each year. It's a really intense support program.
When you say certification, what does that mean?
That means each year the program has to be kind of qualified and needs certain-
So if we don't do it after December, who did certify it?
This Abbott Central.
They have to deal with it directly, that's what you mean there?
Yeah, yeah, and that's how the rest of the country does it.
And they pick up that cost that the state has funded, so for, so in this region, Abbott Central would have to make up eight hundred thousand dollars to support costs, which would go out to each district that Abbott contracted, decided to contract with them. So we think it might diminish the number of schools or districts that decide to stay with Abbott because it's an Abbott cost.
Thank you. You betcha.
So in order for them to, a district to provide the Abbott program, they would have to belong to Abbott Central receiving it in order to be a certified program?
That's, that's the proposal that they're suggesting at this point.
On the other hand, we've been in this quite a while, and any district that, you know, has some kind of mind to it would know how this program is put together. And it isn't so much certifying that it's an Abbott program, it is the course sequence and how you offer it and how you attract the kids and what you, you know, that kind of business is what Abbott's all about, and so, and how you, and, you know, and how you instruct people. So, I mean, I don't know if districts can pick that up, if they've been in it a while, it's just whether they have the, whether they have the energy to sustain it as a, as a program. And that, I mean, that depends on how strong your district is or how strong your-
And then how effective the instructor is, because without a dynamic advisor in the Abbott program, the individual school programs doesn't work, you know, you have to get the kids connected, really does, the teacher really doesn't matter.
Okay, well, that's interesting, because, you know, then you have to look at an eight hundred thousand dollar hit. Well, I think I'll go on the thirteenth if I can. All right, you have to reduce today. No more to do today.
Thank you, Dr. Thomas. First, I'd like to share the quarterly Williams report with the board, and we received no Williams complaints this quarter, so I don't need to respond to you there. Secondly, I have the other half of the blue pencil news, you know, for me. And the governor blue penciled thirty million dollars worth on the state preschool, which equates to around ten and a half percent of the programs. It is a reduction in slots as opposed to a revenue cut per child, so we don't need to be closely estimated about four classrooms of our, you know, for preschool programs for the new year. In addition, the governor is requiring for the first time in the history of the program that state preschool collect family fees. So there will now be a sliding income scale, and we will be mandated, it's not an optional activity, it's a required mandated activity that we contact every single family in the state preschool program, determine what fees they will need to pay, and set a whole system to start collecting on the fees from parents, so that is a, a big undertaking for our program.
How many, how many classes will we have?
Thirty-three.
Thirty-three. And you're going to help it?
We're going to post board this time, and it's going to be tight, we'll watch and see.
And who gets the money that you collect?
It's part of the governor's, it's the governor's.
Yeah, part of the governor's budget, but I, I think, it's part of the governor's budget, you know, and frankly, I think it's going to end up in transitional kindergarten, but, you know, that's up to the governor, how he wants to-
We collect it, we send it someplace?
Oh, no, no, the family fees, the family fees will stay with county schools, but they are going to lower what we get in anticipation of the fact that we will recollect the family fees.
So it's going to be a what?
Well, we anticipate, in the, in the end, we will have less than, because of the thirty million dollar cut, we're not, the state is not going to provide us a cost program, we're not going to collect thirty million dollars in provider fees, so it's only going partially back.
Okay, are we going to be able to absorb this new requirement, or is this going to require new personnel?
We are studying that right now and waiting for management bulletins from the state because the state will, will dictate the process on which we need to do these things.
That's got to generate some, some time and effort.
You would think so.
And there will not be any additional funding for that additional clerical, administrative level of tracking of those fees, we're going to have to absorb it.
That's going to work.
Well, I hope the Abbott people are not counting. Wow, okay, so you, but, so we, yes, so there will be additional people that, you know, need- So you, but so we, yes, so there will be additional people that, you know, need to do this.
We're, yeah, we're going to have to figure that out with either duties that get absorbed or additional staff.
And if this is all before school starts, September?
It is all before school starts.
And the bottom line is that kids that need to go to preschool aren't going to get to go. Because even if the, you can't get blood out of your journey, sliding scale.
Not only are there fewer slots throughout the state, but in fact, you may not have to pay the will deter enrollment from coming to class. We'll have to make some tough decisions. And then we're going to need to watch our classrooms to make sure we have sufficient enrollment to have the staff operate in that class. So it's, it's going to be a tough one in this program.
That's true.
Okay.
Okay, moving on to board members' reports. Who's that this evening?
I just mentioned that I attended the superintendent's conference at Carroll. But I did, it was a great conference and I was really impressed with the number of people that attended. In fact, I can't remember there being any people there before. Great food, very interesting topic, Common Core. And I feel like I am an expert now on Common Core.
I wish.
Anyway, it was very well done and very well done. Nice day. Also, the retirement, I was able to attend two retirements. I apologize for not making Sharon's and Dr. Dan's. The other two that I attended were, were really spectacular. Well done, Dennis, Dennis and Margaret Hill's retirement. Really, really a lot of fun, actually. It was great. And probably the most important announcement I need to make is that tomorrow I will officially be sixty-five years old, almost catching up with you.
Mark, you're the same side. See, they get to the same sign. I didn't know that. What are we getting off of? I believe it's.
Are you all on?
What is this here?
Well, I believe that I became the designated figure for the retirement parties because I went to all of them. Obviously projecting such a party animal. I, I got stuck every time because I had no intention of staying longer than ten minutes. But you get into them and there was a certain one-upsmanship, I understood, is we went through the whole sequence. And what started out as relatively simple became quite complex by the time we got to some of the others. Because I think they visited each other and decided we have to, you know, they all had certain things in common. But it was a, you know, it's obviously a joyous occasion as they are retiring. And, and it was nice to see an opportunity for the staff to, to celebrate with their leaders as their leaders were going down. I did not attend the thousands of retirement parties that you must have done for the staff, you know, heading to the, I don't know, everybody has retired. I do not think that the staff understands particularly that when you so generously offer fifteen hundred, fifteen thousand dollars to them, they will not receive fifteen thousand dollars because of the tax tip. But I don't think they understood all of that. And so that's going to be a big, and you smile, that's going to be a big surprise when you don't get fifteen thousand dollars. But I didn't hear anybody say that out loud. So I didn't either. But I had a good time doing that. I also had none with paying the fee out in our area, you know, because I need with them periodically to go over the special education and talk about what they're doing and, you know, what needs to, to happen. And I enjoyed getting to know her, you know, and becoming part, more, more a part of what's happening there on the, in herself. And, and then I also, since the last time we met, went up, you know, was taken up to Apple Valley to see the dedication of that building. And, and you know, that's good to see. So I had a kind of a busy week, but a busy one. But I'm glad we're past the retirement silly season and get back to work and, and proceed in what is going to be a very difficult year, I'm sure. Also, before I leave, I would like to personally welcome Crystal. You seem to be doing okay. I haven't seen you, you glance more than four or five times over there. But I, but I mean, it's a delight to have you and I'm sure you're going to be a good secretary and you'll get used to us. Very good. I see you using an apple.
I am.
Therefore, you've got the internet today.
I am.
Yes, okay, thank you, that's all I need.
It's my job.
Well, I appreciate you pitching for the board.
Yeah, I did, but I'll make up.
I didn't make it to all of the time. But I did enjoy hearing that conference, learned quite a scratch of the surface of Common Core standards, I think. And it really is going to be an undertaking. I appreciated the variety of people that were invited to the conference, teachers and administrators as well. Because it really is going to have to take a Popeye and everything. And I couldn't help but keep thinking about your comments about reading now. If you can't read, you know, I really do, I agree with you. We could go back to just make sure that you can read, but boy, that's the.
And work a computer.
Yeah.
Take the test.
Yeah, yeah. Well, anyway, I appreciate that. And with so many people retiring, I'm just beginning to career fifty-two. So I'm, I work eight hours a day now, but I am still committed to this position and to the students. Regardless of what some people make of me, I'm, I'm happy to be a driven honor. That's it. Thank you.
Well, thank you. I wanted to ask the status of that sentiment, Morales, Jill. I was trying to get on the agenda and refer to the same address. Ms. Rowley?
Died in committee.
Died?
It died in committee.
Which means what?
It's dead.
This sentiment one is the, the budget that was going to be considered by the supervisors. It'd be most of the website, so I'll do ours. That was very sad. The other thing is, Ellen, did you do a response to Abby's complaint about?
I do. We're working on it.
We're, we're.
We're going to council review it.
Okay. So then Betty and I have a question to you.
Ah, ask it.
There's people that came here and complained about Laura. Are we going to respond to it?
Well, the question that I would, in response, I thought about that as I was listening to them complaining about Laura.
I don't mean specifically, are we going to respond? That's all I'm asking.
Well, I would think that it would, I don't know, what is the group think? Is this, is this?
So, so talk about, this is my concern. If we're going to respond to one, we respond to all. I don't see why we should, you know, look at why, what we should and should not do. I mean, I didn't agree in the beginning, but this be fair. That's what I'm asking.
I do not, one of the things that I based my remarks on the last time was that there was a letter that was sent. And the letter was addressed.
To the board.
To the board. And that was what I was concerned about. We received a letter. Are we going to respond to the letter? What was presented today was in the, in the nature of remarks that we get. If I think somebody would put that in a letter and present to the board as a letter, then I think that, because I have been considering what we ought to do. I believe that the next time, if we get a letter that has that directed, then I would, I think I would probably suggest that we direct the superintendent to write a response that we at the board could consider and send it out. But there was no letter as far, I didn't see them reading the letter directed to the board.
And then I would appreciate county council answering on my behalf that it is my right as a personal citizen to join and recall that because I wasn't representing the board and I'm entitled to a Facebook opinion. I mean, I appreciate county council answering if there were some decisions.
But there was no letter and I do think that's different.
Well, and, and that's what I want to hear. So if they were to send us a letter, then you feel it should be answered? That's what I want to hear.
Certainly. I mean, I, I personally, that's a personal opinion of mine. It started this thing and I think, but I would direct the superintendent to write the letter, let us see what it is. And then if it turns out to be that the board chair should, you know, in an opinion of everybody that the board chair ought to, you know, send the letter, then that's what we do.
Thank you. So, okay. Well, June, I hardly knew what it was like to not have a suitcase in front of me.
Change out again.
Change out again, yeah. I was in, I was in Hawaii. Celebrated my seventy-third birthday in Hawaii. And my twentieth anniversary. I've actually been married fifty years, but only twenty years to Caroline. None of this goes.
It's all on YouTube.
But we had a just wonderful time. My wife's already talking about going back next year. And I need to ask her where she's going to get the funding for next year. I don't know.
Is why?
You know, I saw my, the guys over at Mandt over four days went to Washington DC to the NEA Representative Assembly and the NEA Retired First Annual Meeting, where we discussed a lot of things that are important to all of us.
I was there when you didn't have electricity.
I was there when the electricity went out, not in, in my hotel or not in the community center. But there were people who were out for almost a week. And it was hot. It was a hundred and five degrees in Washington DC for the day. And there were people all around us that had no electricity. And they were angry. Let, let people know that they were angry. But first annual, or not the first, the annual meeting of NEA Retired, we talked about pension reform and the offsets, the pension on the social security offsets and the campaign coming up and the importance of it. And then when we got to the, the NEA RA Representative Assembly, we had more of that kind of stuff. We did hear from a delightful teacher, Rebecca, and her name sounds like Milwaukee, but it's, it's a strange spelling. She's the teacher of the year, the NEA teacher of the year. She's from California and she was delightful and dynamic. She was really fun to listen to. We presented the governor, education governor of the award, you know, the year award to the governor of Minnesota whose name I can't remember. We also heard from Vice President Biden and Jill, his wife, who has a teacher, spoke as a teacher. It was, and did a whole lot of business. We started at seven in the morning and got out about six usually at night. So they were long days. Some days we had lunch, some days we didn't. But it was, it was exciting, but I was sure glad to come home. And that's it. Future agenda items?
I have a question for Dr. Thomas. I had requested last month for litigation costs. I mean, Jill, will that still be discussed as to whether or not that's a legal approach? It's part of our budget.
It's not your budget. It's not in that finer room approved.
It's not the legal budget.
But it is the public approval.
It's approved by the superintendent.
And remember that the only reason those SFA budgets are in there is because for the administrative unit, decisions about what those dollars are paid by superintendent councils will be settled. There's still taxpayers' money that, you know, I feel we need to be able to be aware of. We hear complaints from the community. I understand that I believe the taxpayers write it to. And I'm suggesting the parents that are complaining, they're really referring positions and solvency as that sort of decision.
And we've been, we've been advised that. As board members, we understand that that's the direction that you give to the parents. We've all gotten emails. A lot of surprises.
Okay, other picture?
Well, wait a minute. This was key tangling. I mean, this is about the third time this has come up. So like what, what is the answer to this problem? You are asking for litigation costs. You are saying that if you want those costs, you should go to the SFA. Is that?
Yeah, that's a good.
Okay, so then you go to the SFA.
Those questions go to the place where the decisions are being made for that money.
Well, so that we get, so you get your information is what I'm trying to say. So then if you went through the three SFA's, you could ask for the litigation.
Well, SFA's are, are all in this government. SFA's may not be able to give you that answer either because decisions to vote on litigation at that end of the school district.
But, but then, but where we need, but because instead of keep coming back out of BASK or not, I haven't gotten asked.
Well, we're trying, I mean, like I said to Mr. Martin, we ask county council. I don't think it's written in the perjuice board to call your investigations about litigation. I think that the best place, if you have concerns about how much money is being spent on litigation, you should go to the source and in most cases, the decision makers of the school districts.
Well, they have, they have budgets as well. The SFA's have budgets.
Yeah, but they all do it differently. Some do some reimbursements for districts to offset those costs. It just depends on how the SFA's dollars are set out. So if a person wanted to know what support the SFA's meant towards litigation or if they were involved, they would go to the SFA and ask those questions.
But they agree with me that we approve that. Member of our request is the litigation cost breakdown of how money is used by the county. So are you talking about just county schools? Well, it would be the SFA's litigation budget. For instance, when I come across different articles where they spend, you know, a hundred thousand to deny a family five thousand dollars of services. I mean, that's ridiculous. So I'm trying to see, are we really effectively utilizing the litigation cost to, you know, prevent unreasonable requests from families of disabled kids? We don't know that unless you look at, we would have access to that information.
The decisions that are made by school districts with respect whether to litigate or not would be best answered by them.
Oh, but once, I know, but I'm just talking. You know, it's in the budget that we approve. And you're saying that you're going to approve it, but we can't ask questions about it? That doesn't make sense.
Nobody says you can't ask questions.
Well, I'm asking.
Because what I'm saying is, we would, I don't know how to answer your question, number one. Number two, decisions about litigation are made or not made.
Decisions. Litigation costs is what I ask for. But once, once it's over, it's a settlement, settled, okay? Then we have final numbers. This is how much it cost us. This is how much we had to pay out. If you're just talking about.
See, that's why I'm trying to get it. Why do you want school district?
Whatever SFA is involved in that has to pay out.
SFA, those payouts are within my school districts.
No, but it's within the SFA documentation. I know because years ago I went to West End SFA and they showed me their ledgers that had the different districts' information on that one thing. So it is there. So I just want to answer this.
Well, have you been to the SFA and asked for it?
Well, I'm on the counter. Now, I think it's right for us to be able to have that information. I mean.
It is my decision to make the decision.
I'm asking you to put on the agenda. I didn't say make a decision. We put on the agenda and, and, you know, for information purposes. We're not going to vote on that.
Just, I'm curious, see, what, if, I just, I know that people costs are always astronomical. It's unbelievable.
Is, is, if there were an abuse of that, who would investigate it? If, if you really did think it would, you know, some sort of abuse, would that be our part there or?
Well, I think that those decisions are made by school district boards and the members of those communities would need to decide whether or not they're using that unapproved. I mean, that's where accountability applies.
Yeah, it's my channel, we had our own SFA, and we were, we were responsible for litigation cuts, right? So now the county.
I'm not asking for us to decide it either. I'm asking that we be able to view what the costs are. We just want the dollar amount. Well. Was spent on litigation.
Every case has a case number. You step this, by the way, this is what you paid up. That's it. Very simple. I, I'm not sure we have access to that, but.
Anyway, then. Other future agenda items?
I'm going to be going to the CSBA annual conference. And then I'll be attending July thirtieth, the Tobaak Middle School education.
One and twelve, man?
Ten Rialto, what is it called?
One and twelve, man?
Yeah, that's what I said.
Oh, no, I said any of the future.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, now, board members' conference.
CSBA of Tobaak Middle School Education, July thirtieth, ten morning.
And remember, if you're, if you are going to CSBA, you get that paperwork. As I was reminded when I looked at the date, July second was, was for people. Anything else?
Yeah.
Okay, we are in recess until four, and it's time for the public hearing, efficiency of SFA's.
The reason why we're in fourth part.
It has to be.